Welcome to the Moore City Council Chambers, Portland C Street. The month April, day sixteen, twenty nineteen. Any public comment? Okay, we're gonna be running a special meeting concurrent with the study session at five thirty with the regular meeting. The special means this closed session. Okay. This is Act One. Annual Ethics Brown Act Training, Portland.
I'm gonna come down here and speak to the group.
I don't think my mic's on there, I can hardly hear you.
Can you hardly hear me?
Yeah.
Is it on?
Oh, great.
Okay, alright.
There we go.
Alright, there we go. Okay, so tonight we're gonna do the biannual ethics workshop, basically, every two years. Council members, commissioners, and other committees in the city are required to attend the training. Just for everyone's knowledge, council and the Birmingham has received a copy of this book, which is a Brown Act book. There are copies over there if anyone wants to look at them. If you would like a copy of it and you didn't receive one, there's a list at the city clerk's desk for you to sign with your name and contact information, and I'll get you one. And then, there's also the PowerPoint presentation is over there, and there is sign-in sheet at the city clerk's desk. There's one up there for council, please make sure you sign in so that you get credit, and I don't have to do this again somewhere else in the next, for the next few years. So, tonight. If I can get my PowerPoint to word, my pointer to word.
The left one?
The left one?
Right one, maybe?
No?
Janelle, what are the repercussions, if any, for missing? I may have to step off for a brief moment. Is there makeup class or something like that?
You can, yeah, you can do it somewhere else. We have, my office always provides trainings.
Okay.
So, we can step into those. If it's just a few minutes, I'm gonna count you okay. If it's a full hour, then it might be a little bit more problematic.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
So, why are we here? This is required training. It's the different code section, five, three, two, three, five, requires this training pursuant to Assembly Bill one, two, three, four. We're gonna, it's, basically, the idea is that commissioners, council members, and public agency individuals need to do the right thing in the public interest. This is, this presentation is to help you with spotting issues before they become a problem, and basically keeping out of the headlines in a bad way. So, the required topics for ethics training are the Brown Act, governmental transparency and fair processes, and general ethic prin- ethics principles beyond, beyond the law. Whistleblowing, basically, is kinda what we call it in generic terms. That's what I'm gonna talk about tonight. At the next council meeting, we'll talk about the rest of the topics, which are general financial gain and personal advantages and perks. So, the Brown Act basics. Basically, the Brown Act is open meeting law. It is law under California, and it basically is designed to facilitate transparency for government agencies. And the only exception to having something occur in open session is the accepted authorized closed session items, which we'll talk a little bit more about this evening. And this law applies to all local agencies, legislative bodies, and committees, and subordinate bodies of a council, board, of governors, those types of things. So, school districts, cities, counties, this law applies to all local agencies. So, what does the Brown Act require? It requires that actions and deliberation be ha- be taken openly and in the public. It requires that the meetings are public unless the closed session is allowed. Requires the agency to publish agendas and packets for the public so they know what's gonna be discussed, and they have to make those items available to the public. As of January first, twenty nineteen, the agency's agenda and packet must be published on their webpage, if they have a webpage. So, what is a meeting? So, when we say what is a, when we say that it has to be a public meeting, what does that mean? Well, if you have a majority of the mem- basically, it's a congregation of a majority of the members of the body at the same time and place to hear, discuss, or deliberate on any item within the city's jurisdiction. Since there's five member council, that would be, a majority would be three. Planning commission, I think, has seven, and so the majority would be four, in that instance. Under the Brown Act, the meeting, it is still a meeting even if action doesn't occur, or there are consensus isn't resolved. If three people get together and talk about, or four people get together and talk about the topic within their jurisdiction, then it's considered a meeting, regardless of whether they actually vote or agree on anything. The Brown Act allows for three kinds of specific meetings, so that would be a regular meeting, like we have tonight. And, and a regular meeting is set by ordinance. So, those are a specific time and place that's set by an official action. In this city's case, the account, the regular meetings for the city of LaMoor are Tuesdays at five thirty. The, when you post an agenda for a regular meeting, it requires a seventy-two hour notice of that agenda. And you have to post it on the webpage for normal places throughout the city so the public can see it, basically. There are certain actions that it can only occur at a regular meeting. So, for example, approval of an executive, for example, the city manager's contract can only occur in open session at a regular meeting. Approval of an ordinance can only occur at a regular meeting. There's also special meetings. We also have a special meeting tonight to run concurrently. Special meetings require twenty-four hours' notice, and usually occur because something has come up between the time the regular meeting was posted and within less than twenty, and less than twenty-four hours, excuse me, more than twenty-four hours before the regular meeting. Or you could do a special meeting if it's gonna be a long drawn-out process. For example, the budget process is typically done in a special meeting because it takes a long time to talk about the process, so. And you don't necessarily wanna take up the, have your meeting go till two A.M. in the morning on a regular meeting. So, those are typically the instances of special meetings. They can be called at any time. Has to be at least twenty-four hours' notice, as I mentioned. The time, place, and the business that is to be discussed has to be agendaized, and the public can comment on the agenda item. Now, the difference between a special meeting and a regular meeting, the regular meeting requires that you have a general public comment section where someone from the public can get up and talk about anything that's not on the agenda. Special meetings do not require that same, that same provision, right? They can talk on anything that's on the agenda, but you don't have to have a general public comment at a special meeting. By the way, if anyone in the audience or council has questions, please feel free to ask me throughout, just interrupt me. What doesn't constitute a meeting? Well, individual contact. So, if a council member talks to a citizen, or can't talk to another council member, I mean, I say that with, with a, with an asterisk because there are times we'll talk about a serial meeting. But just individual contact between two people is not a meeting. A public conference where you, and you have, for example, the League of Cities, if you send two council members to the League of Cities, is not necessarily a public meeting. If council members want to attend the school board meeting, and all of you go to the school board meeting, you could do that. I would recommend that any of those conferences or, or other meetings that you might attend, that you don't necessarily sit next to each other to avoid the appearance of impropriety in talking about city stuff, but you don't have to take that recommendation, obviously. Community meetings and other local agency meetings. And also social gatherings. If there's a party, you know, you get to go to the party, just, you don't have to govern yourself on these things, and so just know not to talk about business at the party, basically. Now, the Brown Act applies to, it could also apply to staff, potentially, and we're gonna talk about it during the meeting. So, what, watch out, what, was that a meeting, right? Everyone's like, well, was that a real meeting? Well, so serial meetings are prohibited. A Brown Act prohibits the use of technology or intermediaries by the quorum of the members to conduct the meeting. So, in this case, in Stockton versus redevelopment agency, what happened was the council, the redevelopment agency members were basically texting by phone and talking by text, right? That is a serial meeting. If you wanna talk about an issue that's agendaized, you need to do it, and so the public can hear what you're saying. So, if council members sitting up there on the dais and you're texting each other, that could be considered an improper meeting. If you do it outside of an agendaized meeting, whether it's in or outside, email, text message, those are things that could create serial meetings. The Attorney General has opined that most often the type of, this, this type of meeting, we mean a serial meeting, is conducted through a series of communications by individual members or less than a quorum group, ultimately involving a majority of the members. And so, what does that mean? Basically, you have one person, council member, talk to another council member. Council member A says, hey, I wanna talk to you about the, the, the new ordinance that's coming to council. Can we talk about that? Sure. That's not a meeting, that's okay. Then, council member B goes to council member C and says, hey, council member A said this. Well, now you have a, now you have a Brown Act violation, okay? So, what's a serial meeting look like? A to B, B to C, and then we have what's called the hub and spoke. So, you have one person in the middle that, basically, so if I was to call, say, council member Brown and say, council member Brown, what do you think about this issue? And he tells me, and then I call council member Lyons, and I say, miss council member Lyons, what do you think about this issue? And then I call council member Billingsley and say, what do you think about this issue? And I call council member Mayor Neal, and I say, what do you think about this issue? And then I call him back and say, well, council member Billingsley says this, and, you know, and I kind of convey through me, who knows everything, that is the hub and spoke. So, that's what the two different, you have a linear chain or a circular chain, basically. Those are potential serial meetings, and are violations of the Brown Act.
Excuse me.
Yeah?
If you break the Brown, the Brown Act, what would be the consequences? Have they ever had, a, a city that broke the Brown Act and there was consequences?
Yes. Yeah, and I'm gonna show you a picture here shortly, but there, the consequences are, it could be criminal or civil liability.
I have a question.
Uh-huh.
What's the difference from what you just explained in the basic change?
The basic change is kind of the same thing. The basic change is that, the, the serial meeting, the, yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So, the bottom line on communications is a majority of the members cannot discuss issues regarding their jurisdiction outside of an agendaized meeting. What about teleconferences? That comes up in the Brown Act. What if one of you, for example, if council member Billingsley can't attend because he's at a, the W D C's conference, but we have a meeting that night, and he might attend because there's an item on there that he wants? So, he can attend by teleconference as long as he follows certain criteria. The agenda has to be posted in all locations, so the, it would have to be posted here in LaMoor and wherever the council member is. The, at least a quorum has to be within the city, so you have to have at least three council members present in the city in order for teleconference hearing and meeting to occur. And the identity and location is noticed and freely accessible to the public either at the location, maybe the absentee council member is at, as well as in LaMoor. An example is, we had a, a city that, where the, one of the council members wanted to attend from their home. You can do that as long as you open your home to anyone in the public who wants to come to your home and be present at that, at that location. So, the members of the public have the right to be at either location where the council members are.
But because of, in that, in that, in that case, you have to have something on the, on your door too, so that they know this is the place where you need to go.
Yeah, it has to be agendaized, it would be agendaized at your home. So, the agenda for the city of LaMoor would have both addresses, the home address of the council member and the city's address, and the public could go to either.
Okay.
And you have to have the open door, you have to be on a phone, it's public, et cetera.
Thank you.
You have to allow public comment from that side too, if there's someone there.
Thank you.
Okay, so I've mentioned earlier that you can have anything that's gonna ha- occur in open meeting except for closed session. So, there's a certain criteria, and they're all listed in this book that I gave you, of when closed session can occur. There, those matters tend to be negotiations, conference of legal counsel, determine whether to initiate a lawsuit. You have some other factors that where closed session, not as common, but it, extreme safety issues for the city could be heard in closed session. Determination whether to purchase property. That one is limited to price and terms, but that can be discussed in closed session because, again, that's kind of negotiations, both labor. Evaluations of employees that are, that are employed by the council. So, and on that one, in the city of LaMoor, the only two employees that are, can be evaluated by the city council in closed session are Nathan and myself because we are the only two employees that are hired directly by the council. So, you have to identify the items on the agenda, and you have to announce in open session what those items are, and allow public comment. So, when Mayor Neal reads the agenda for closed session, he does so to be in compliance with the Brown Act. He also asks if anyone has any comments on it. Someone could come up and say, hey, I see you have a comment on the, for example, tonight I think we have a anticipated litigation item on the special meeting and a, an existing litigation on the regular meeting. They'd come up and ask what's happening in that case. You may or may not be able to answer that question, but they can come up and ask it. The council members in closed session, only council members or necessary staff members are allowed, and the necessary staff members are determined by the council. So, whoever they think is appropriate to be in there. The only exception to that is when you have the anticipated litigation item, that does require legal counsel to be present. So, otherwise, I don't have to be in closed session, only on those items.
I have a question for you.
Yep?
Is there a cert- only certain people can say, if I think the mayor's violating the Brown Act, can I accuse him of that? Or can only you do that, or the chief or myself?
So, and I'll talk about this under pen too small, but to answer your question directly, can anyone accuse somebody of a violation of Brown Act? Either the DA or any individual has the right to bring an action against the city for a violation of the Brown Act. So, information is confidential in closed session, and any communication relating to a reason for the closed session with, is also included. So, not just what was said specifically in closed session, but information that relates to that is also privileged. And members may not publicly disclose this information. So, if you are in closed session and you have that information, you cannot publicly disclose that information, unless you're authorized by law. There are some exceptions, so obviously, if council as a body decides that they wanna waive that closed session, they can. But the pri- the holder of the privilege is the council as a body and not any one individual member. It is a violation of the law to disclose information from closed session. It's a violation of the Brown Act, and any violation of the Brown Act is, can be a crime. So, the crime is, basically, it's a misdemeanor to violate the Brown Act. A misdemeanor criminally results in either a thousand dollar fine or six months in jail, or both, depending on what the court orders. You can also have civil liability. As I mentioned earlier, civil liability can be brought, a civil case can be brought by any individual who believes a Brown Act violation has occurred, or the district's attorney. And if the civil action is brought, the attorneys, the person who brings the act- the action, if they are successful in proving a Brown Act violation occurred, they are rewarded their twenty fees. There are potentially other fines that a commission or organization could place upon the city, including fines and penalties, and including, at some point in the worst-case scenarios, they have ordered that Brown, that closed sessions are tape recorded. And you certainly don't want to, to be under the microscope like that, yes?
Yes, I, I was just wondering, what if, for instance, somebody has accusations saying that somebody did a Brown Act, but it was false accusations? Could that be, was reversed on them as well, or they?
Could you file a malicious prosecution or something like that? Yeah, you, you might be able to, but they would have to file the lawsuit first.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I mean, there's other possibility, I suppose, if they keep repeating it, you might, there's, might be other causes of action that the city could do or an individual could, could claim. If you think that you have run afoul of the Brown Act, and it's something that can be corrected or cured, then you can do that. So, basically, for example, if we have a, a meeting and we don't properly agendaize a, a, an issue, then you could re-agendaize that matter, re-notice it, and revote, and that would be a correct and cure of that item. When you have a disclosure of closed session, it's a little harder to correct and cure, but correct and cure is one of the possibilities of a Brown Act violation. So, why do we talk about the Brown Act is because of governmental transparency and fairness. And so, basically, this slide kind of runs down everything I've just talked about, that you're supposed to agendaize your meetings, that it be done in open. Because LaMoor has a webpage, those meetings have to be on the homepage. As of January first of this year, that would mean, that includes not just the council meetings, but the commission meetings as well. A majority may be consulted, cannot consult outside of an agendaized meeting, with some exceptions, and we talked about those. Another issue that we'll talk about probably a little bit more next time, but the other issue involving governmental transparency is the financial interests or disclosures. So, each of you that are in this room that are required to do this training are probably also required to file a Form 700. And the Form 700 is a form that tells everyone in the public what your financial interests are as it relates to the city of LaMoor. You have to file a Form 700 within six months of assuming office annually while in office. When you change a position, so for example, if you, even though you're council members, when Mayor Neal became a mayor, he had to do a change of position, Form 700, and when you leave office, you also have to file, file a Form 700. In the city of LaMoor, I know that the council, the commissioners, myself, the city manager, and I believe all department heads are required to file Form 700. There might be a few others. The city passes a resolution, and that's usually looked at every couple of years, and I know they're looking at it right now, it needs to be updated. Charitable fundraising, this applies only to elected officials, does not apply to employees. But if you have a, you must disclose a charitable donation of five thousand or more from any single source. So, if you get a five thousand dollar or more campaign to your election fund or something like that, that is considered something you have to report. A contribution, when I say contribution, that means any payment, a forgiveness of a loan, an exchange of goods and services, a, the payment of a loan to a third party under the hash, enforceable promises to make a payment. Those are all considered contributions. So, contribution doesn't just mean money to you, it could be something that you benefit from. It does not, it could be a ticket, right? Purchasing tickets for you and your family to go to Disney World. That would be a contribution and something you would have to report. Consequences of the violations. Again, if you violate this, the, these financial laws, it's a nullification of the decision. It is a criminal sanction, and, and if it's an intentional violation, a misdemeanor, so six months in jail or a thousand, and, or a thousand dollar fine. And then, obviously, the adverse media attention. So, you were asking about, does anyone, does, Mayor, you were asking if anyone has ever gotten sued for a Brown Act violation? Well, the city of Hamford did in two thousand and six. The DA filed the lawsuit, and it was a civil suit. Again, along with government and transparency is the Public Records Act. So, agendas of the meetings and materials of public record, other writings prepared, own, used, or retained by the agency, including electronic records. So, that includes all of council members' emails. Each of the council members, and I believe the commissioners, Nathan, have a city website, an email address?
I don't have an email, but I don't.
Okay, so the commissioners do not, the council members do. If you use any email, your personal email as a commissioner, or your personal email as a council member, you open that personal account up to public record search if you use it for city business. So, just, you can try and, for commissioners, since you don't have a city one, I would, doesn't, you know, go to Yahoo or Gmail and pick one specifically for, for city issues. Leave it, don't do anything with city stuff on that one. For council members, obviously, use your laMoor.com email is the best. You don't have to, but you open your other email up for inspection if you don't.
Absolutely. I'll bet, the, talking about my oldest brother, he's passed, so I don't, I feel comfortable talking about this, but he was the mayor of close several years ago, and he went to federal prison because he didn't put something on his 700 form. They got him for mail fraud. He's been a year in federal prison, Portland, Oregon. So, that's how they can get you a minor back. So, if you think you're not doing something right, that's how.
Yeah, and.
He's been a year in Portland, federal prison.
That, that's a good, that's a good point. So, if they charge you with a violation of the Brown Act, it's a misdemeanor, but as you've seen in the news, with this college thing and all the people that paid for their kids, made charitable donations for their kids, right? They're not charging them with just violations of.
Mail fraud.
That, that, they're charging with mail fraud, the same thi- or, or tax evasion, which is the same thing that they got Al Capone on, by the way. Al Capone spent years in jail because of tax evasion, not because of any other crime committed. So, they can come up with all kinds of things for you. On a public records act request, you must respond within ten days if requested. You have to, you don't have to produce the records in ten days, but you must tell them whether you have records responsive. There is some exception to that, you can ask for more time if you need it to look for records. There is, the other exception is the Form 700 has to be produced within forty-eight hours. So, if you get a request for a Form 700, that should be on file with the city clerk at all times, and must be produced within Form forty-eight hours. The cost of duplication is the only thing you can charge the individual, and that's basically by code.
Code has not been updated in a long time. Obviously, if you are sued for not providing a public record, you can get, they can get their attorney's fees, and then, obviously, the adverse media attention for your, for misconduct. So, the best practices are to assume all information is public or will become public. So, if you're writing that email, make sure that you write it in such a way that you, that someday it may be out there in the public. Don't put anything you don't want someone to read in, in your emails. Don't discuss agency business with fellow decision makers, decision makers outside meetings. And then, the other idea is incompatible offices. So, you cannot hold simultaneously two public offices that are incompatible. And so, what does that mean? It's a, it's a case-by-case analysis, but for example, if you were a council member and a school board member, we would have to look and see if those are incompatible. I don't know that they would necessarily be in this city, but in some cities, they would be. If you have an incompatible office, we, you don't get to choose which office you want, you give up the first one you were in. That's the rule. So, if you decide to run, for example, the Board of Supervisors, and you, and you're a city council member, you probably cannot hold both offices. You would have to give up, if the city council ran for Board of Supervisors, was elected, you'd have to give up your city council seat, basically. The penalty is, as I said, forfeit the first office. So, what about whistleblowers? Whistleblowers, so, we hear that term, and what does it mean? Well, so this individual, is he our hero or a traitor? This is Daniel Ellsberg, and I don't, if you don't know, it'll give you a little history lesson. Daniel Ellsberg was an American activist and a former US, United States military analyst, who was employed by the Rand Corporation. who was employed by the Rand Corporation and precipitated a national political controversy in nineteen seventy-one when he released the Pentagon Papers. And the top-secret Pentagon study of the US government's decision-making in revel, in relation to the Vietnam War. In nineteen seventy-three, he was charged with espionage, um, along with theft and conspiracy, a maximum sentence of a hundred and fifteen years. Due to governmental misconduct and illegal evidence gathering, the defense was successful in having all charges dismissed against him in nineteen seventy-three. So he did not serve any time in jail. Um, he was awarded the Wright Light Livelihood Award in two thousand and six, and he was known for having formulated an important example of the decision theory in the Ellenberg Paradox. Basically, he was the first person, you've heard Weeke, Weeke Links, Chelsea Manning, and Edward Snowden. He was the first, okay? And, and I'm not commenting on whether he was a hero or traitor, that's for everyone to decide on theirselves. But the idea is, he was considered a whistleblower. This is Edward Snowden. Again, in nineteen eighty-three, he was a computer professional, former CIA employee, um, and he copied, um, information from the NSA and released it. Um, I, obviously, he has not come back to the United States, so he hasn't been tried, but I know there are charges against him. So what is a whistleblower? A whistleblower is anyone who raises a question about improper practices within an organization, which can include violations of company policy, law, regulation, threat of public interest, national security, as well as fraud and corruption. There is generally no legal duty or compulsion to become a whistleblower. You do not have to be a whistleblower. Um, there is one exception, and that has to do with the, um, securities field. So obviously, if you, you do have a duty to disclose wrongdoings with respect to financial matters and companies publicly trading their stocks. Um, there are different types of whistleblowers. You can be a passive whistleblower, so you do not act voluntarily, you do not actively volunteer your concerns. You could be an active whistleblower, take affirmative action to voice your concerns. Or an incepet whistleblower, terminated in anticipation of passive or active opposition. Typically, in the city's instance, the whistleblower is the, an employee. So, um, from the employee's perspective, um, they may have conflicting duties regarding disclosure of obedience, loyalty, confidentiality, um, to aid law enforcement, to aid transparency and accountability, and to serve the public. So those are things that employees may think and wonder about and worry about. Um, the cha, the whistleblower challenge from the employer's perspective is, it's the employee's decision to disclose what they believe is unethical. Um, that, from an employer's perspective, that may be, um, gain an inside position through the employment or promotion process. They may be, the employee may be doing that to gain a position, uh, using the position to gain confidential information, acting, um, for their own self-interest. Um, and so when you're looking at these types of cases, you have to be careful because the federal, basically, whistleblower has protection under the US Constitution, under the Civil Service Act, under the whistleblower protection act, and under the state labor code or government code. Now, those typically, um, the whistleblower process would be, an employee can report the wrongdoing to the city manager, the city attorney, the assistant city manager, a department head, or any member of the human resources department. And if those things occur, then obviously, the city is now on notice and has to probably bring those issues, potentially bring those issues to council for further determination. At some point. You have to be very careful with whistleblowers, that you do not retaliate or interfere with their employment. Um, no employee, elected official, consultant, contractors, vendors, agents of the city should engage in any retaliatory personnel action against a whistleblower for providing the information, for disclosing or threatening to disclose a wrongdoing, or objecting or refusing to participate in a wrongdoing. Um, if retaliation is suspected, you should report it to the city manager, the city attorney, or the human resources department. So tonight, we're going to cut it a little short. I'm going to talk about these ten rules of public service again next time. Um, the, so the ten rules, if you remember these ten rules, you should stay out of harm's way. So approach your job as a service to the public. Promise only good, fair, and honest service. So basically, don't make promises you can't keep. You can't promise a certain decision or vote. Um, pay for your own lunch, we'll talk a little bit more about financial gains and perks next time. But if you pay for your own lunch, you don't have to worry about reporting things on your Form 700 form. Um, buy your own tickets to events, again, the Form 700, right? Or taking a contribution. Um, accepting gifts from family and friends is fine, but return gifts from others. If it's, you know, if, you have to make that call, it's your call. We'll talk a little bit more about gifts next time. But you potentially have some restrictions, since you're an elected official, on what kind of gifts you can take and how much those gifts are. Um, if you have business travel, ask the city to reimburse you for those. Um, the city has a trip and travel policy, you want them to pay for it, so it doesn't look like you're, um, blurring the lines. Um, do personal business outside of the workplace, if you're an employee, don't do your personal business on government time, basically. Um, be open and transparent, be honest and fair in all your dealings, and always do the right thing, even when no one's watching. So we'll talk a little bit about some of those more next time. But that is your first hour of ethics and Brown Act training. And I'm a little fast, I speak fast. So are there any questions?
Yeah, one for you.
Oh.
As you know, I don't miss too many lunches. My question here is, because I'm now on the planning commission, I can no longer go to lunch with Mr. Olson as a citizen.
You may go to lunch with Mr. Olson, buy your own lunch, he should buy his own lunch, too.
Okay. How about if, if two employees go to lunch? Do they have to be separate? Because I, I, I don't know, I'm just kind of.
Yep.
Let me put it this way, if, I, I grew up in a generation where it was, you're just appropriate to buy lunch for the opposite sex.
Right.
Okay, so you're telling me now because of the Brown Act, I can't do that?
Well, no, I, I didn't say you can't do that. I said it was a good rule of thumb, yes. So, so we'll talk about gifts and perks next time, but if it's under fifty dollars, you probably don't have to report it, okay? As long as it, as long as it doesn't add up to four hundred and ten dollars over the course of a year, again, you don't have to report it. And, and, um, the idea is just, so for example, if you go and buy Mayor Neal lunch, and he's gonna, you want him, you know, you're an advocate for a certain position, now it looks like you're influencing him, right? That, that's really what you're talking about here.
If I buy a fifty-dollar lunch, he's gonna look like me.
Right, but, but the, but the other thing is, is that I realize that Lamar is a small town, and everyone is, have known, you've known each other for a long time. If you've been friends with somebody for a long time, if you've known Nathan forever and you are friends, that's a difference, that's a different scenario, okay? So just keep that in mind. Any other questions? Yeah.
Yeah, um, I'm at a conference, President of the City, and, um, in reference to number seven, personal business outside of workplace. Um, you have a business and you're in your hotel room, you have to communicate phone, email, text.
I think that's outside of business. Yeah, and, and I think most of the time that, that particular number really applies to, um, employees. So, you know, if, if Daryl's sitting at his desk, he should put, be the chief of police, he shouldn't be contracting and, and working on a private business he may have on the, on the side during office hours, right? That would be different. As a planning commissioner, if you're at a conference, I, I don't know that that's necessarily within working hours. If you're at a planning commission meeting, then you probably shouldn't be doing personal business from the back. That would be an equivalent. Any other questions?
Oh.
I've got one.
Okay.
So let's say a city employee is on official business that the city sent them to, let's say a conference. Let's say they go to the conference, and they show up initially to the conference, but they don't stay at the conference. They only do the first five minutes. And then they spend their time at the hotel, whatever, return, not completing the conference. Do they still get paid for the conference?
Well, I think.
Officially, attend the conference.
Yeah, it would, so I'm going to say it's going to depend, right? So for example, if it's a department head, they probably don't get paid on an hourly rate. They're not an hourly rate employee, they're a salaried employee. Um, they obviously have to do so many hours for the city's business. Um, and it's kind of a, it's a questionable call, right?
Well, let's say it's Bakersfield, so what we do, the city is, we go ahead and pay them their mileage and possibly their hotel, that's a part of our procedure in the city.
Right.
I'm actually speaking from a case that actually existed within the city, in the finance department at one time. So this person didn't attend the conferences, just brought it to the city manager, or our community's not aware of this one.
Uh, that, I can't tell, I can't answer why, but I can tell you that if they received mileage and they, and, and reimbursement for per diem and stuff, and they didn't actually attend the conference, that, then that is a potential issue, because the city manager would need to look into.
So the final question to this is, so are individuals within the city don't fall into these confines? Because that's what happened, I didn't know, that was, that was the answer. Okay, I didn't know. What do you do in a case where you go down, and something happened, you know, you were down there and you felt sick in the stomach or something, you couldn't attend the conference? What would you professionally say that person should do?
I would, I personally, okay, just speaking for myself, would have basically informed my supervisor that I was ill, I couldn't contend with the conference, and let them make the choice on whether I was entitled to reimbursement or not. Any other questions?
Three, yeah.
Okay. May, there'll probably be more questions next time. By the way, if you're going to attend the next meeting, please bring an electronic device. So the next part of the presentation has some what's called Pole EV in it. So I'm going to ask questions, you'll be able to answer anonymously, and we'll, everyone will get to see in real time the responses from the audience and the council, but no one will know what your answer is, so you can answer honestly.
Do you have an estimated time of when that's going to happen?
It's going to happen on May seventh.
May seventh, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chanel.
Good job.
I got the signing list right here.
Oh, I guess there's two. Go ahead and go.
Yeah, go ahead and go.
Okay, going down to closed session. This item has been set aside for the city council to meet in closed session to discuss matters pursuant of Government Code Section 54956.94. The mayor will provide the oral report regarding the closed session to the beginning of the next regular city council meeting. One, that would be two items. One, conference with legal counsel, existing litigations, Government Code Section 54956.9D1, City of Lamar versus Holly Andrela Blair, case number nineteen C slash zero zero four three. One case.
Number two.
Number two. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigations, Government Code Section 54956.9, significant exposure of litigations pursuant of paragraph two or three of subdivision D, one case. Thank you, we, any public comments? I see there's none. The time is now six twen, six twenty. We are adjourned. Call to order, welcome to Lamar City Council Chambers, 429 C Street, date, month, April sixteenth, twenty nineteen. We're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and as we continue to stand, remain standing for the invocation of a pastor. Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Ash.
We can please bow our heads and close our eyes for a moment of prayer and reverence to the Lord. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you that you are here amongst us, Lord, and we come before you humbly, Father, Lord, as we celebrate this week, Father, the tomb that was empty, Father, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, who was risen from the dead, and we thank you for that, first and foremost, Lord. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening. And Lord, I pray against anything that the enemy may be planning, scheming, plotting, Father. We pray for what is best for the city, which is in line with your will. Lord, we humbly submit ourselves to your will, Father, and we know that in spite of anything that the enemy has planned, Father, that your will will be done. So Lord, I pray for a blessing and anointing upon this team that is before me, Lord, a spirit of unity and oneness and purpose, that purpose being your will for the city of Lamar. Lord, I pray for a blessing upon our, our police department, our fire department, and all those who selflessly serve, Father, who stand in the gap and protect us. And I pray for these elected officials before me, Lord. Bless them for their service. And we pray these things in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, and all God's people, said.
Amen.
Amen.
Praise God, thank you. Roll call. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Um, Mayor Neal.
Here.
Mayor Pro-Ten Billingsley.
Here.
Councilmember Lyons.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Blair.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any approval additions and or deletions on here? Yeah.
Counsel, I believe, uh, that staff would like to remove item five dash two and note that there is an amended staff report for five dash three that has been provided to council and to the public. And the warrant register has been provided to council, which will be added to the online agenda.
Thank you.
Counsel, approve those additions and changes. We need to have a motion to approve these additions and changes.
Can I get a motion from council to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I got a motion to approve. Mr. Billingsley, Mr. Billingsley?
Need a second.
I need a second?
Second.
Okay, I got a second by Mr. Lyons, Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
And I go to aye. Thank you. Public comment, anyone in the public want to expound on something that is not on the agenda? Come over here, you got three minutes. I see you got Amy here, okay.
All right, hello, Amy Ward, Lamar Chamber of Commerce. I don't know if you guys heard, but we had our nineteenth annual pizza festival and Lamar Days this past weekend, and it went pretty amazing. Um, as the vision was, we celebrated Lamar. We had the volunteer fire department, police department, community members out there. We had members from Santa Rosa Rancheria, um, they, they had a cultural booth. We had service groups, all kinds of businesses out there. Um, I'd like to thank, uh, Mayor Neal and Councilmember Brown for coming out and judging our pizza decorating contest. Um, it was, it was a really great event, we had a really great turnout, and we're really looking forward for next year. Um, I'm also very equally excited to talk about a partnership that we have formed. Last week, I met with Amanda from the city, we met with Lance and Jay from the Kings County Economic Development Corporation, and we met with Richard from SBDC. And we have kind of combined resources to provide a class next month that's free that will help businesses write their business plan, um, people looking to open a business, maybe expand their business, um, but coming together and providing a resource for our community, um, and kind of partnering together is something that we've all been working towards. So, uh, May twenty-second, it is free to the public, and it is the beginning of many more workshops to come. So I hope we'll see you guys all there. And then finally, next week, we do have a mixer at Circle T Ranch. Uh, more information is found online. And finally, hi, my name's Amy Ward, I'm also a resident of Lamar, and I'd like to brag on my child. If you guys are not aware, the Lamar Middle College High School Academic Decathlon next week will travel to Minnesota. They are state champions, and will be, um, representing the state, one of two schools representing the state of California in the national competition. So, um, it's kind of cool that out of one point eight million high school students in California, nine of them come from our city, so.
Awesome.
Pretty exciting stuff, so keep your fingers crossed for them.
All right. Okay, ceremony and presentations. Any other public comments? Going down the ceremony and presentations, I see there's no ceremony and presentation, so we're gonna go to the Department and City Manager Report, Section Two.
It's two reports tonight, starting out with Frank Rivera.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Um, I just want to update you on well number 10. Nathan and I have kind of been keeping you guys updated. Um, uh, as you remember, during the city's routine maintenance project, uh, video inspection determined that the well's casing was damaged by ground subsidence. The assessment of damage of the well has been slow-going, but, uh, we now have final clear picture of the entire well casing. So, we've gotten down to the bottom, which is about 1,540 feet, um, and there's been one more area at about 540 feet that also has some, some subsidence that has been found. So, there has been two, um, areas that have been repaired, and so now there's, the final one will be the, the third repair. Um, the good news is that the, the well is fixable. The, the bad news is it's gonna cost us to get it up and running. Uh, we figure probably somewhere around, uh, the range of about $440,000 to complete the, the repair work, uh, to clean out the, uh, the strata areas that are, that are clogged with, with sediments, and then just do our routine, um, uh, repair of equipment. I think there's a pump that needs to be, be replaced, so, uh, we'll have some final numbers for you, uh, next council meeting on the overall, uh, cost of getting that well back and running.
And we will be bringing that back as a budget amendment, correct?
Correct, yes.
Impact to the city? Impact to the city? If we don't have, I mean, I'm, I know, we definitely gotta get it going, but, but, uh, in, in the interim, I mean, it's gonna be down. It's gonna take a while to get it fixed.
Yeah, we'll get a schedule, we need to get it up and running as, as quickly as possible. Luckily, the weather's still been cool, so we haven't had to kick on.
Other wells are okay.
Other wells are okay, yes.
Well, number 10 is the city's workhorse, though, and handles the brunt of the summer demand loads when people start watering. That's, that's the main supply, and we typically shut that well down in the winters to kind of let it refurbish itself, so, yeah.
Okay.
I have a question. Um, you guys had three repairs done on the same well?
Two, two repairs have been done.
On well 10?
Well number 10, yes.
And, um, stuff just keeps happening?
No, this, so it's, the, the entire process, so, within this process, we've, we've just recently, recently repaired two, two areas that were damaged through, through, due to subsidence. So, one was at about 328 feet. As the camera goes down, and it allows us to go further, another one was found at about 358 feet, that was repaired. They cleared out the well casing, we were able to get down to, you know, past 540 feet. Well, actually, we got all the way down to, to 1,540 feet, and there was one more area that's damaged that needs to be repaired. So, all this work has been in progress for the past, since January. Been actually, uh, determining all of the, um.
What's the cost, if, if I may, what, what's the cost on that, uh, the well's three repairs? How much was that?
Right now, I think we have a, a, a total of about maybe $98,000 for, for the work that has been done up to date.
Okay.
But yeah, no, the repairs were, were not something that was done last year. This, this, all the repair work has been done in the last two to three months.
Okay. Just wanted to see, because our general fund, I'm just trying to keep everything, cause we on the low. Is this coming out the general fund?
No, this will not come out of the general fund.
What, what will this be out of?
This will be out of the water fund, it'll be in enterprise fund.
Enterprise fund?
Yes.
And how much is in your enterprise fund, right now?
In water? Four-plus million. Um, it was all part of the bond process, and, and when the, when the city went forward with the, the, um, 218 hearings for the water, one of the adders that was in there was a $700,000, um, kind of pay-as-we-go capital expenditures was mounted into that, so we haven't really been tapping into that this year, so we kind of have keyed an additional $700,000 for repairs of this thing. No impact to general fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. And then, again, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So, I only have one update. Um, traveled last week with Police Chief Daryl Smith. We went up to the California Cannabis Control Conference, where they talked about regulations, codes, and enforcement. So, we spent a few days up in, in Sacramento, uh, meeting with a lot of regulators, um, politicians, municipalities, businesses. So, a lot of good information, we'll be bringing some more of that, I'll be bringing more of that back in the near future in a study session. Thank you.
Okay. Now, see, there's nothing to report out on closed session. We're going to consent calendar, section three. Three dash one, approval minutes, regular meeting, April 2nd, 2019. Three dash two, approval resolution 2019 slash 14, Senate Bill One, SB One, road maintenance and rehabilitation account project list for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
I would like to please pull, um, item number three dash two for discussion.
Okay, three dash two. Anybody else wanna pull anything? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve? The calendar accept three dash one? Three dash two?
Make a motion to approve three one.
I'll second.
Okay. I got a motion by Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Three dash two, approval resolution 2019 14, Senate Bill? Maintenance and rehabilitation account project list.
Frank Rivera will be coming up.
I kinda explained to you about what this, do you, just want an explanation of what SB One funds are used for?
I know what SB One funds are used for, I'd like to have this, please, explained for the general public, what it is, and very short summary, just so, because there's a lot of people in the public who are unaware, that's all.
Okay, um, on April 28th, 2017, uh, the governor signed Senate Bill number, uh, one, Senate Bill One, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017, also known as SB One. Um, this increases per gallon fuel excise taxes, diesel fuel sales taxes, and vehicle registration fees with inflationary adjustments to tax rates in future years for purposes of addressing basic road maintenance, rebuild, rehabilitation, and roadway safety needs. SB One emphasizes the importance of accountability and transparency in the delivery of California's transportation programs. Therefore, in order to be eligible for RMRA funding, statute requires cities and counties to provide basic annual RMRA project reporting to the California Transportation Commission. Further program requirements, jurisdictions are required to submit to the CTC by May 1st, 2019. A resolution documenting the city's council, city council approval of a project list with locations, schedule, and estimated useful life of the project before they can receive RA, our, RMRA funds. Below is a list of the city's projects. Um, the city has received, uh, $239,618.55 of the 410,570 anticipated for fiscal year 2018, 2019, and will, will receive approximately $428,555 for the fiscal year 2019, 2020. Staff recommends to city council adopt resolution 2019 dash 14 approving the fiscal year, uh, 2019 to 2020 SB One project list. So, it's, it's been a requirement of the state, if, if we want to, to be able to get this money to report every year, uh, and establish a resolution of all the streets that we, we, we plan on, 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 um, doing projects on. And, uh, they just wanna make sure that, um, that, I guess, we stick to our plan, and that we get whatever we say we're gonna do, that we get it done, so. I don't know if there's.
No, I have a question for our city manager, please.
Yep.
Um, how in-depth were you in contact with the different council members regarding what projects need to be done moving forward with the city? And what was the criteria you used to knock off particular items from suggestion?
So, we get the road developments from the city engineer QK, they're kind of the, the keepers of our master plan. So, these are the projects that, when we look at the viability of the whole city, these are what the recommendations are. Um, I'd have to double-check, but I, I, can you swap, I, I think you might be able to swap some projects out, as long as they're like projects. But, um, we did not have discussions with council on the, the road maintenance. Those are just typical ongoing maintenance things that we do within the city.
And so, if you had any suggestions from whether council members or general citizens from the public, um, what have you done with those suggestions? I'm just curious.
What was the last part of your question?
What have you done with those suggestions? Do they get added to the list, or they, is there a repository for where those suggestions go, or do they just go out into the trash? I mean, I would like just to know what happens to those suggestions.
Well, we have a list of them, and then we also, on our city website, have a, a portal that people can go in and ask for pothole repairs, road maintenance, a couple of the big projects we're doing this year was, uh, striping, um, Iona was one of them, because it was hard to see the lines. We're doing some work over on, I forget the name, it's over there just north of Cinnamon, a couple blocks from the, um, police department, that a lot of residents, the, it's breaking up. The storm gutter, the V gutter's getting done over there. We're working on some stuff over on golf links that people had called in to complain about, because they're, they're low spots. So, yeah, we do keep a running total of those.
So, what criteria do you use to go fix something that one citizen has stated but not another? Because I just wanna make sure that citizens who offer suggestions are being treated equitably. So, what is your criteria for accepting some suggestions and putting funds towards those suggestions and not others? What is the criteria you use?
So, I did not use criteria, I go off of what our recommendations from our engineering are, and then our public works department works with them through meetings to, to look at the road maintenance.
I see, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I noticed you was spending, all the guy that's about, about $600,000? The money, the, the quote she was giving?
Yeah, between fiscal year 2018, 19, and, and 1920, yes.
Okay.
The way SB One works, as well as, so everybody, it went to the ballot and it passed, so it's a tax that everybody pays. But municipalities, they base, they base your funding allowance and prior year expenditures. So, if we hadn't had, um, public works projects in the past, we wouldn't be getting the benefit SB One. So, this is what we're, we're entitled to because of past expenditures and future allowances.
Okay. Anybody from the public wanting to expound on this?
I'm Connie Valashan at 523 C Street in Lamoore. Um, I'm, I don't know how to say this, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Um, Ms. Blair, I appreciate you wanting to explain these, some of these things on the consent calendar. But as a, somebody from the public, I read my packet, I read your packet, and I do understand these. And so, I really, I really feel like there's time being wasted explaining this, you know, like, I need this explained to me. I don't, I'm pretty sure that almost everybody else in here reads their packet, and if they don't read it, it's because they're not interested in this. So, and this is something that the city, I know we're spending a lot of money, but I feel like when you pull things from the consent calendar and you want them explained, and they're explained, and then you vote no on them anyway, I feel like it's a waste of time. So, I'm, I don't know how else to say that, so, thank you.
Mrs. Valashan, uh, Mrs. Connie Valashan, uh, I'm gonna say, uh, she has her prerogative, if she wants to ask them questions, she can ask them.
I realize that, I realize that, but I'm, I guess maybe what I'm under, hearing is the tone of voice.
Okay.
And I'm, I, I don't like the tone of voice, and when she talks to, you know, people, and that's just, you know, I realize she has, she can ask these questions. And I'm just telling you how I feel.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Mayor Neal?
Anyone else?
Um, it's not a response to this, it just has been addressed to council.
I'm looking at the public right now for anymore. Okay, come back to council, go ahead.
I just wanted to let the council know that I'm sure, just as you are all aware, you all vote in the best interest of constituents that you represent. So do I. I appreciate comments from the public, but sometimes it's not about you. That's all, thank you.
Okay, let's move on, stay on the agenda. Um, we're gonna go on to take a vote on this. Can I get a vote?
Make a motion to approve resolution, uh, 2019 dash one four. Second.
Okay, I got a motion from Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, going on to new businesses, section five. Report discussed in or of council actions will be taken. Five dash one, reporting recommendations of, award contract of design build phase service of JR Filance Construction for Water Treatment Plant. Mr. Rivera?
Busy tonight.
Yeah, I should've stayed up here. Okay, um, in January 2019, city staff utilizing standard procurement procedures distributed a request for qualifications for design build services to produce final designs for, for, and to construct a water treatment plant to reduce disinfection byproducts in the city's water supply. The check, the project will be, will consist of two phases, one, the design phase, two, the construction phase. Both phases of the project must be completed no later than June 30th, 2020. The city received three proposals, um, by March 19th, 2019 deadline, from the following consultants, Clark Brothers Incorporated, JR Filance Construction, Myers &amp; Sons. A review committee consisting of city staff, veneers, veneers, staff in the city of Corcoran's Public Works Director ranked the proposals. The ranking was based on a cumulative score from the following categories, fee proposal, team experience, water, wastewater, design build experience, water treatment plant experience, including experience with the California Department of Drinking Water, safety record, and prevailing wage. Filance unanimously ranked number one in all categories. It is imperative that the city start work on the project in order to meet the June 2020 deadline and avoid costly penalties and fines. Staff recommends that the city council approve the contract in the amount of $525,260 to JR Filance Construction and authorize the city manager to execute the required contract documents. Can I ask any questions?
Want to open it to the public? I see none to the public. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve, uh, to award a contract and to allow the city manager to, uh, execute required documents.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Brown, a second by Mr. Billingsley. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
And I vote aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we already passed, five dash two has been, uh, taken off. Five dash three has been amended. Okay, Ms. Billingsley?
Okay, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So, back in, well, first let me mention that your amended staff report just amended the contract amount, so, um, we just had a slight little typo, so we fixed it. So, back in June of 2018, city council authorized staff to move forward with a contract with Teeter Architecture to draft plans for a new dispatch building for the city of Lamoore, which would bring dispatch services, um, for public safety to our community. Right now, we currently contract with Hanford. So, Teeter worked diligently to draft some plans, um, using the modular technology design, and we put that out to bid. We extended the bid deadline by about two weeks, because we needed to encourage more participation. On March 12th, I On March 12th, I believe, we opened the bids and we had two bids, accelerated modular concepts and JTS modular. The estimate was 1.8 million. It came in at 1.69 million. So that was good news. This evening, we're asking for council's approval to award the bid to JTS Construction and also authorize $170,000 contingency. It's typical in construction projects to add a contingency. In this case, we did 10% since it's modular construction to account for any potential change orders that may occur during construction. If we don't have any, that money remains in the, in the project fund. Currently, we have about $3.5 million budgeted from several different funding sources. There's just a little over a million from the general fund. We had a $939,000 state contribution that was given to us, I believe, back in 2016 that we still need to use, as well as about $855,000 that we procured when we defeased the 2011 bonds that went to the Oversight Board for approval in 16. So if council approves this contract, we will be largely paying for that through use of development impact fees, the state contribution, and the defeasement of the bond. And at this step, we won't be dipping into the general fund.
That's good. Any questions from council?
I just want to make sure that I completely understand modular builds. So from my understanding from modular builds, rather than having construction occur on site and hiring like local folks to construct locally, instead, these are modular builds. They're builds that essentially are kind of like grown up Legos. They're built and constructed other places, mostly Arizona, and that where you can get, you know, cheaper construction costs, get a bill, then you haul it over here. And essentially, you're just putting it together. And essentially, we don't hire as many local folks otherwise. And I'm just curious to know if going forward, we might be able to, be able to have a consensus and directing staff to look into ways where we can hire more local residents for those sort of builds rather than using modular builds.
Can I get a consensus from council or do we want to do this or?
Is that something that should be brought up at council comments? Or is that something we need to talk about now?
It is sort of related to the item, but it could be brought up in council comments too. I would recommend you move forward on the agenda item and then consider the request if you want to at this time or wait until the council comments.
Well, there was my attempt at working cooperatively, so there goes that. I'm done.
Okay. I'm going to open it up to the public.
Dr. Gail Crum, um, citizen of the, of the community. I agree with Ms. Blair. I think anytime we have an opportunity to, to hire within our own, in our own community, since we're building in our own community, I think that's a very good idea to hire within. And I don't see what the problem is why we continuously go out. This is Kings County, it seems to me, likes to go outside of the area and hire outside people to do major projects. And yet, we're considered one of the poorest counties in the state, but we don't hire our own people. So we need to consider hiring our own people. We have people that are out of work, receiving state funding because they can't work. And we have work all around, but yet you see buildings or you see projects out on the road and we don't recognize none of the builders, we don't recognize none of the people. I believe that we need to keep our money here. We talk about keeping money here, but yet we take it outside when it comes to major projects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Spears, can I ask your question, please? Did you guys do anything in your powers to get anybody from these areas of Kings County to see if they can do the project or?
Okay, so what I will say is that the process of procuring this was done to the letter of the law. We followed California Public Contract Code. I, we had Teeter facilitate the bid for us. They reached out to as many modular companies. First off, it was a formal bid, so it was all done publicly. It was posted through the Business Trade Journals. And so it was posted everywhere it needed to be. But they reached out to modular builders that they knew based on the type of construction. This was drawn as a modular project. So a typical contractor wouldn't have bid the way that it was designed.
It would've been much more expensive, correct?
In most cases, yes. That was one of the reasons why we chose to go modular. And you'll have to forgive me, I don't remember the exact date. It might've been this June date. There was a conversation with council at the time about the method of design and modular was discussed at that time. If we do it any other way, if we chose not to use modular design, public contract code says we have to award it to the lowest responsive bidder. So there still is no guarantee that the contractor that's low is going to be from this area. It might increase our opportunity to have people from the area, but we can't just give it to them because they're from here. We have about a 5% preferred element in our, our purchasing policy that says that if the low bidder, if, if the second to lowest bidder is within 5% of the low bidder and they're here in Lemoore, then they get preference. But that's the only exception that's made for truly local contractors. I hope I answered your question.
Yes, you did.
I can call, Mr., I have Lauren Ayton here, he's with Teeter. He did the design if you want more information.
I think we, I think you did a great job. Okay.
So my question would be to you. So you get the contract. In the contract, can't you devise a plan where some of the locals that are here, even if it's just a handyman or the guy that sweeps the building down, to provide some sort of work for them within that contract?
Once we award the contract to the contractor, they are responsible for finding their own subs. So we don't do that for them. So we can't tell them where to get their workforce.
Okay. Is there anybody local that does this kind of work?
Not to my knowledge, no.
I have a follow-up question. So part of that council that was discussing this early on was me. Obviously, I talked about this and asked about this. And at the time, I believe you were actually in the office as well with me and our city manager. When I asked, I didn't want to just assume that it would be a higher cost. I realize it could be, but I didn't want to make an assumption. So I just wanted to find out the difference between if we went this way with a modular build or if we went with a local construction. And I just wanted to see the breakdown of the costs and be able to compare them. And I had asked for that and I never received an answer. But I wanted to make that statement here on the dais. I'd still like that side-by-side comparison at some point because we like to assume a lot of things. But until I see it on paper that it absolutely is true that it's going to cost more, and how much more when we constantly want our citizens to be able to go and spend money out our retail shops so we get that sales tax money? But if they don't have money in their pocket to begin with, that's a problem. One way to put money in their pocket is to be able to hire them for local jobs, which is why I suggest seeing the side-by-side comparison because even if it does cost more, if it's only a little bit more, and we're going to ensure that our local citizens have more money in their pocket that then can go spend locally and give us back those sales dollars, I think it's an investment well worth looking into. Thank you.
I would also like to mention that this is just the first of two packages that will come to council. So when we do a modular bid, the modular package gets developed first because it requires state approval and that's its own separate contract. In the coming weeks, you'll also see a site package that comes to you and that's all of the underground work, the slab, et cetera. That's being done as a true design bid build and that one is not going to be modular. So that will be put out and anybody local can put in for that one.
I don't know if you'll be able to answer this question, but was that process evaluated? What, how close, how close it would've been going modular or not?
We did not do that, but I do have Lauren here. I don't know if he has any, he has a lot of experience bidding these types of projects. He might be able to give you a professional opinion, but we did not do an actual assessment for this specific project.
Okay.
Yeah, so Lauren Ayton, senior architect with Teeter Architects and Engineers. And I've been the project architect from this project since the beginning. To, I can only answer your question in round figures, but this, this project bid at just a little over $400 per square foot, the, the actual difference between a conventional site-built building and the modular building, there's two differences. The primary difference is about 20% more cost to do a site-built building than a modular building. But the other significant difference is the time of delivery. So we can deliver the modular building onsite, complete and ready to be occupied in about half the time, plus or minus a little bit, that you could do a site-built building. So there were two advantages. One that we always look at when we consider a modular approach is not only just the base cost of the building, but also the cost of money and the time of delivery. So those are the two factors that are kind of considered when we elect to go with project one way or the other.
Well, I just wanted to follow up with, part of my request when I originally talked to the city manager was to actually separate the cost of labor versus material because those are very different costs and I wanted to see the difference in those breakdowns. Again, I never received that, but we had lots of time to look at that at that time. So I just want to let everybody know that. I'm done. Thank you.
And just one more quick question to confirm, using modular, you wouldn't necessarily have to use contractors from the area that would be paid a prevailing wage. Is that correct? Is that another factor in using modular?
Well, okay, so there are some cost savings. A portion of the building is built in a factory and is not necessarily reflected on prevailing wage. The building arrives at the site anywhere between 70 and 80% complete. So the last 70% of the work has to be completed on site.
Okay.
And so those will be prevailing wage as well. And as Ms. Spears mentioned, also, there is a separate site package that includes all of the groundwork. So what we're issuing right now is just for the building itself only. And the site package includes, you know, lots of work around the site, including the existing building, improvements to the parking lot, and a number of other features. And as she mentioned, that's going to be more of a typical delivery, general contractor delivery, and just about anybody could qualify for it. I, I'd like to add too that just from my own part, that this is a very technically complicated building. We're dealing with an essential services building. We have, we have a 911 call center, dispatch center in this building. So there's a high degree of very technical issues that need to be dealt with to make this building perform. So in any case, you know, right now, we're looking at a, at a cost of this building at around $420 per square foot. And this build, this type of building in the site-built building would be 500 plus easily in a, in a different circumstance, just because of the technical requirements of it. So again, those are speaking in very round numbers, you know, without the specificity as to the particular requirements. But police department buildings have become very, very expensive.
I bet.
Of late.
Okay, that's the only question I had. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
I'd like to, I'd like to say something or are we?
No, I'm going to open it back to the public and then come back and bring it back to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Open back to the public.
Dr. Crystal Jackson, president in the ACP. Good afternoon, councilman and mayor. Did you, is it correct in saying that they will have the, they will have the freedom to do the hiring and not the city? Who will have the control basically? Is it the company that built those and bring them back? Or will it be left up to the city at that point? Freedom of, I was unclear on that.
It is not the city's role to choose whom the actual workers are. So in a typical bid, they, the contractor will give us a list of their subcontractors and that's how they develop their bid. They tell us who their workforce is going to be in a typical bid system. In this modular bid system, it's very similar. They have a workforce they use to put that together. That's not something the city dictates for them.
So that means that possibly the workers that are still out here unemployed will still be unemployed. We keep saying that we want to, I have no problem with the modular portion of it. The problem that I have is that freedom and slack to where they are in control of our city as far as jobs are concerned. You see all these empty buildings when you drive around Lemoore, that means people are out of jobs, correct? As the term or phrase was used, we don't want to be leakers. Well, if you allow someone outside of the city to do the hiring, um, isn't that a leaker? I think that, I think that the city should have more control over the selection of people. Since it's coming to the city, why not allow for the city to make the decision in who we're hiring? In that sense, we would have the employment rate decrease. And I think that's all I have, have to say because really, it's about the people. If we're standing up for the people, then we should be hiring the people in good faith, showing them that we're actually looking out for the people. Thank you.
Okay.
Dr. Jackson, I hear you, absolutely. But the Public Contractors Code does not allow the city to pick and choose who we use. The only thing we can do is we can use our in-house labor on projects less than $60,000. And anything over 60 has to go out to a formal bid process. It would be illegal for us to go out and hire whoever we wanted to, to perform these functions within our city. We do not legally have that right. We have to follow Public Contractors Code and that's what we've done in this project. Like it or dislike it, we can, we legally don't have that authority or that right.
I just shake my head to that. The city, it should be the city, power and city.
Okay, chief?
I'm bringing the fire chief up here because I want to make sure that when this building is complete, the benefit that we're going to have, we're going to enhance services that we're going to bring public safety dispatch to our city. And we'll personalize it to the service that he expects from his department and I expect from ours.
Absolutely.
In doing that, we're also going to have an opportunity to provide local jobs and dispatch positions that are full-time jobs. It's not a, you know, a job that's going to last for eight months during construction. It's actually a job that's going to last a lifetime, hopefully. So hopefully, the citizens see the benefit of that as well, long-term employment. So I wanted to make sure that you understood, you know, our standard and why we're doing this and the ability to enhance our services that we currently expect from our profession. And additionally, when we went into this project, we put a lot of thought into this. And in our opinion, you know, our taxpayers in our city work very hard for their money. And it is our obligation to make sure that this project comes in at the lowest amount of public funds, in my opinion. That's what our prerogative was when we went into designing this building.
And, you know, they're talking, they're talking about monies leaving the city. Right now, we're paying, I believe it's approximately $275,000 to the city of Hanford for dispatch.
For 38.
For, sorry, there we go. So, once the dispatch center is made, that's $438,000 that stays in the city of Lemoore that will hopefully let us hire more people locally and in town and spend that money here instead of sending it to Hanford.
Just wanted to make sure you understood the, you know, the outcome and the long, long-term goal. There are a lot of benefits once we complete this project.
It's not just a one and done deal. It's going to be a continuation.
No, I didn't. Thank you, guys. You're doing a great job.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, we're going to bring it back to council. Ms. Blair?
Okay, well, I'm so thankful that Mr. Billingsley reiterated the difference between labor and material because that is, again, what I asked the difference to be broken down for in the first place so that we could see if there was an opportunity to perhaps purchase local materials from somebody that's a local vendor, not just hire in terms of labor. And it would be nice to be able to look at those opportunities early on in projects, not wait until we're on the, on the dais here, ready to vote. See, I think both chiefs gave us an excellent opportunity to see sort of my point and why it's so important to have more than one perspective in the room and why it's important to have council members who represent those different perspectives as part of these decisions. And I'll explain why. So you talked about the priority of local in hiring jobs for certain positions, hopefully for a lifetime. Well, those are certain folks that will qualify for those positions. And normally, the same folks that are in front of Home Depot looking for day jobs are not the same ones that are going to be applying for long-term positions for dispatch. So you see, some of the folks that I represent are looking for jobs and they're not going to qualify for the sort of jobs our city prioritizes. And I'm merely asking that we start prioritizing jobs in general for all of our constituents.
And I'm merely asking that we start prioritizing jobs in general for all of our constituents, not just for a select few, because in the end, I think that would benefit our whole community rather than just a few. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve five-three, uh, award bid and allow the contingency.
Second.
Got him. Go ahead.
Council, uh, are you also authorizing the city manager to sign the contract after a, a review and approval?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Billings, I mean, Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billings?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
I vouch aye. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now, last call. City council report, last request, want to, uh, Mr. Brown?
Uh, just wanna say, appreciate, uh, staff and, and, uh, police department, fire department for everything you do, uh, makes the ci, city work. Just also wanna do, uh, brief out that there's a job fair at Olem. Uh, they're looking at for their summer, I guess for their seasonal hire. I believe the day is on the twenty-second of May. Um, but you can get with Olem, probably go to their website, and they'll, they'll post, you know, uh, imagine also Kings, uh, Economic Development Corp, Job Corp, or Job Training over there would also probably have those dates and times, so if you go to Olem. Uh, one other last thing I wanna do is brief, uh, there's proposed CART route changes for twenty, uh, for July first, twenty nineteen. I briefed it last time. Uh, if you have any questions, or if you, uh, go to the, uh, CART website, um, and if, uh, what you gotta do is CART.org, and it'll take you right to the website, so, uh, thank you very much. And one, oh, one other thing, I am for, uh, hiring local people. Say hello more, I wanna let everybody, everybody know that. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
Ms. Blair?
Thank you, I have three items that I'd like to state. Um, the first is that, um, I have had a, a number of trainings, um, at the state level for ethics, and I wasn't here earlier, and I know I had a number of citizens already commenting on why. And I was going to make a comment, but correct me if I'm wrong, um, am I allowed to comment on pending litigation? No, okay, so I hope that ends that question now. All right, the next thing I would like to comment on is some of the questions that have been directed my way, um, since the new council has been seated. And so I just wanted to address what it is that I do for a living, so that people can understand, and, um, hopefully, this will end some of those comments. You all know that I'm a teacher, and I teach English, and after the initial grammar and punctuation, after, you know, one A, one might ask, what do you do for the next twelve years of study if you keep continuing on and continuing on? Well, in order to understand language and context, 'cause context is really important, right? Uh, one needs to understand different systems of power. If you don't understand who's in charge in a room, uh, and you don't understand what systems at play, you're gonna have a really hard time understanding communication. So my subject matter expertise is on the communication of identity, and in particular, systems such as racism, sexism, ableism, ageism, antisemitism, patriotism, nationalism, all those lovely isms which are systems, that's what I teach as like a foundational level, so people understand language and context at the, at the college level. So hopefully, that addresses that concern by constituents, and we can all move on. And last, I, um, wanted to suggest something, because again, it's really important that we start looking at different points of view and different perspectives. And I have a number of constituents that I imagine probably speak to me that don't speak to, to all of you necessarily. And in doing so, in speaking to constituents this last week, um, a number of constituents have addressed a concern about the letter that we sent regarding the, um, Tachi tribe, um, putting land that's locally in the city in trust. And I have to say, I agree with a lot of the constituents in saying we should, um, keep local control whenever possible, especially within our city boundaries. That's really important, especially if we are considering tax monies that could be lost, right? And, and we wanna make sure that we get those, those things, um, we have control over those things in our city. So I've heard those concerns, and I agree with those. Uh, but I also noticed, when you look at sort of the paperwork, I kind of went through my packet, was looking at it, you know, I think that there are a number of properties, and they were just kind of compiled into one, uh, form, because, you know, federal forms are pretty boring and, and a lot of red tape, you know. So just for simplicity, I think that might've been what was going on, and we haven't had a lot of discussion. But I just, just looking at that, I wanted to give a suggestion to council and ask for consensus, because I know, Mayor Neal, you had also, uh, talked a little bit about the wording of that letter. One way we could maybe move forward that might be helpful for both sides, for everybody, is if we wrote another letter clearly stating that we have an objection to the properties that are inside our city districts, because again, we want local control, um, and that for our local, inside our city entity. But for the other properties that are listed as part of that form, um, that are on county, uh, and really, we're not gonna have a whole lot to say with county stuff anyway. They, they could kind of size type us, uh, go, um, to the side and just work with the county anyway. Um, just out of nicety, say, look, that's the part we object to, we've already sent our letter of objection. But anything in the county, we're not going to object to, we're not, we're gonna stay neutral, we're just not gonna say anything, because that's not really our business anyway, and we don't need to get into that fight. It might be a way of sort of moving forward in a way that we can all agree on.
Ms. Blair, are you asking for a consent?
Yes, and that was the, that, for the letter to be, a new letter to be written, uh, where we clearly state our objection is for anything that is inside the city limits to be put in trust, but anything county-wide, anything outside the city limits, we're just gonna stay neutral on. And that way, when we move forward, it's like sort of a, a peace offering, you're kind of, uh, offering a, a, kinda like a dove, you know, offering an olive branch and saying, look, we just wanna, like, let everybody know we want local control, everybody's okay with that, but, but we're gonna stay neutral on anything that we don't directly oversee. And I think that might be a nice olive branch. Can we please have consensus moving forward to write a new letter with that in mind?
I, I got a question about that. I mean, I don't have a problem, but was there a deadline on this letter, or, or would that?
Yes, there was, April, April seventh.
It's not so much a letter that would directly impact what's going on right now. Um, because actually, if, if you look at it closely, technically, what's going on right now is only, really has to be handled by the county and the state. We, we don't have to even be a part of this conversation. We interjected ourselves with that letter. It's a way to offer a peace offering going forward, just a statement from the council that we're just stating we want local control, as our constituents have always said. But anything that's county-wide, anything that's not directly our oversight, we're just gonna stay neutral on and not get in your business and not get in your way. That way, we're sort of extending a nice peace offering, saying, look, we're not in all of your business here.
Okay. I don't see nothing wrong with that, if I can get a consent from the council.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay.
Thank you.
So council's asking to bring it back for our agenda item, correct?
Absolutely.
And so are you going, well, I'd like to offer, to have that letter written, and then so we can, we can, we have it on the agenda, we can actually vote on that letter at that time. So if we can please have that ahead of time to look at at our agenda.
Absolutely.
I would like to point out that our letter we sent only discusses the land located approximately six miles within the city limits of Lemoore. We did not comment about any properties that were not within the city of Lemoore.
Again, this is a statement from the council to offer a peace offering, saying that we just wanna make it clear, we only wanna talk about local control being ours, but anything that's not directly in the city, that's in the county, that we don't oversee, we're just gonna stay neutral on, because we don't want to offend somebody.
I think we gotta consent on that, we gotta consent on that.
Done.
It's done.
Okay, so. Okay, so we don't need to argue about it anymore, then?
No, absolutely not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lyons?
No, I have nothing at this time, thank you.
Mr. Billings?
Neither do I.
Well, I have, I have a couple things. I, I wanna thank Amy Ward, uh, that was absolutely superb, piece of fest, uh, great energy, great people. Uh, like to, I like to thank the Native Americans for being there and showing their support as well. They was all in, and I see my boxer over there when I, she walked in a little late. She's Native American and Esperanza, thank you for being here. I used to train her as a boxer, she was tough. I'm, I'm getting, I'm going in the rabbit hole, I'm gonna use your, your, your words, Dave. It just, it makes me excited seeing you're involved and keeping me involved as well. Um, I wanna let everybody know that our city, uh, we all stick together, although we don't think alike sometimes, and it doesn't mean nothing. I, I really feel that some things I think, me and Chad don't, uh, agree on everything. All of us don't, that don't mean we don't like each other. And I just thank God for the prayer that we had, Pastor Ash, uh, prayer changes things. So I just wanna let you guys know, you guys stay blessed. The time is already eight twenty-seven, adjourned.